Welcome to the Candidate Forum for Sterling Heights City Council. My name is David Barron, I'm the immediate past Chairman of the Board for the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce and the current Chairman of the Public Policy Committee. On behalf of the Chamber, the members, the Board, our ambassadors, staff, and the Public Policy Committee, we're grateful for the opportunity to present this year's City Council Candidate Forum. I will serve as moderator and will be asking questions that were prepared by our media representatives. A special thank you to blogger Jeff Garapi and Mitch Hots from McCombe Daily for supplying today's questions. At this time, I'm going to introduce the candidates, and so I'll just bring your name up and just wave, smile, and we'll do introductions shortly. First of all, we have Brian Alsobrooks. Deanna Kosky. Michael Radke.
Good morning.
Maria Schmidt. Liz Sarowski. Henry Yanez. And Barbara Ziarco. Thank you all for your desire to serve our great community. Each candidate will be given two minutes for a personal introduction. Names will be drawn to see what order goes first. When a name is drawn, that person will respond, and then will move clockwise or to my right, your left, until all candidates have responded. Following the introductions, we'll begin the questioning, where each candidate, again, will have two minutes. Names, again, will be drawn, and questions will be drawn for that process. The number of questions we'll ask will be determined by the available time that we have. In the following, the question and answer period, you'll be given two minutes to give a final statement relating to why you should be elected or re-elected. Patty La Duke, to my left here, is the Director of Networking and Focus Groups for the Chamber. She'll be our timer today. As you start with your comments, she will start the timer. As you'll see up here, there's a green light. Green light means go. After a minute and a half, the light will turn yellow. That means you have 30 seconds left. When the light turns red, your time is up. Please finish up as soon as possible at that point. And then we'll move on to the next candidate. We thank the candidates for participating today, and the audience as well for being in attendance. We ask that both the audience, as well as the candidates, please refrain from any applause or cheers, any heckling, or any unacceptable behaviors. Our intent is solely to provide the citizens of Sterling Heights an opportunity to know where you all stand on the important matters, and to see your vision in how to move this great city forward. Due to the number of candidates we have here today, we're anticipating this will last probably two, maybe two and a half hours at the top. Thank you for your attention. Now, let's begin with the personal introductions, and I will select a name to start. And that's Brian Alsobrooks. You have two minutes for your introduction.
Hi, my name is Brian Alsobrooks, aka Spaghetti Man. Most of you know me from either delivering newspapers in the AM, or my dancing over at Dodge Park, or various locations around the area. I've been a resident of Sterling Heights for 30 years. My occupation is, I'm a newspaper distributor slash professional entertainer, Spaghetti Man. And my educational background is, I graduated at Sterling Heights High School, attended Northern Michigan University for four years. Three years ago, the City Council awarded me this Nice Neighbor Award for my activities on behalf of the city as a performing artist. I've mentored a lot of youth in the performing arts and stuff. It was three years ago, after I received this Nice Neighbor Award, people started asking me to extend my role as a folk hero. I am somewhat of a folk hero, especially to the youth. And I thought about it a long time, and then I finally decided this year was my time to run for the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Thank you. I'd like to first extend a couple of thank yous, actually, first of all, to the residents both here and at home, for taking the time to involve yourselves in our political process a little bit more deeply, and for involving yourselves. To my fellow candidates for being here, for taking time out of your day in our ever-busy schedules, especially with the election coming up, understanding how important it is to reach our residents. To my campaign team for everything they've done for me, Lord knows I wouldn't be here without you guys. And, of course, to the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce and SHTV for putting this on today. I'm a 22-year resident of the city of Sterling Heights, an active member of the Sterling Heights Historical Commission, to which I was appointed from the sitting council. I'm a graduate of Sterling Heights Stevenson High School in the class of 2015, a graduate of Detroit Mercy with my Bachelor of Arts in History in 2019. While at Detroit Mercy, I minored in Political Science, African-American Studies, and I was elected by my peers the President of the National Historical Honor Society, and appointed by a professor to the National Society of Leadership and Success. I'm also a full-time employee as a supervisor at Imagine Macomb, and a man who likes to spend time with his family and friends. I'm here today to advocate for the working class, to work towards new affordable housing, and to represent the city of Sterling Heights that I love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine?
Good morning, fellow residents. Thank you to the Chamber for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Jasmine Early, resident and homeowner in Sterling Heights for almost 16 years. Married to my husband Douglas for over 18 years, we had a son David in high school. I have an associate degree with emphasis in architecture from McComb Community College, and an architectural sorry, degree from the University Catholic of Columbia. As a volunteer for more than 10 years, I am honored to serve you. I graduated from the Fire Civilian Academy and the Citizens Police Academy. An active member for our Citizens Emergency Response Team, the Drug Free Coalition, the Pride and Champ Program, Helping Seniors, and McComb County Right to Life. Also, I volunteered for parents, teacher activities for my son's school, a special needs ministry in Sunday School at church, and an ambassador for Alliance Defending Freedom Legal, and an elected precinct delegate. Served as a board member for the Arts Commission and the Beautification Commission. For the last five years, as a leader working with the residents and their concerns, I had gained the knowledge and experience that made me qualified to be a voice for you as your City Council member. My approach to government has proven that when there is an issue affecting our community, neighbors should have the opportunity to voice their concern, then we come together to resolve each problem. As a proud American citizen who loves our city, I encourage assimilation to our American values, to build healthy families, great schools, and safe neighborhoods. I need you, I need your family, your friends, vote in November election. Please contact me at jasmineearly.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Deanna?
Good morning. I would like to thank the Chamber for hosting the Meet the Candidates Forum again for Sterling Heights. My name is Deanna Kosky, my husband is Dennis, we have three sons, Dennis, Devin, his wife is Tina, and Derek. We have five grandchildren, and we all live in Sterling Heights. We moved to Sterling Heights in 1969, a year after the city became a city. Over the years, I have had the opportunity to watch the city grow. I have been fortunate to have had the honor to be part of the planning and direction required to help make Sterling Heights the best place to work, play, do business, and raise a family. I have an associate degree as a legal assistant, a real estate broker's license, and a title insurance agent's license. I was elected to City Council in 1989. As a councilperson, I wanted to stay informed, to be able to serve the residents to the best of my ability. To do this, I completed the MML Leadership Academy Levels 1, 2, and 3. Attended the Citizens Police and the Citizens Fire Academy, the CERT program, and the election poll workers training offered by the city. My work experience over the years include working for a savings and loan as a savings supervisor, mortgage counselor and closer, real estate broker, closing broker, and title insurance ESCO officer. Currently, I am retired and enjoying being a councilwoman, serving the residents of Sterling Heights, and would like to continue for another two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Good morning. My name is Michael Radke, and I'm currently on the City Council. I'd like to thank all the residents who are attending the forum right now, the Chamber for putting it on, and my fellow candidates for being here today. You know, I decided to run two years ago on a platform of keeping Sterling Heights safe, making sure we improve our police and fire services, fix our code enforcement, and create a city for everyone. I think we've had a lot of progress on those goals. In that time, we've hired three new police officers, we've created the introduction of city ambulances, we've had the hiring of three additional code enforcement officers, and we've continued the recreating recreation program, which has improved our 26 neighborhood parks, including Dodge Park, which is right outside City Hall right now. But the work's not done. We can still do more. We are still 21 police officers down from when I grew up in Sterling Heights. I've lived here for 20 years, and when I was a child here, and then a young adult, we had 174 police officers. We have 152 now. So while we've made strides toward improving it, and we're going to continue to improve it with the passage of Safe Streets, again, the renewal, which will improve our city, we can do more, and I intend to do more. So I hope the residents will trust me for two more years to keep on doing what we've had so much success on here in Sterling Heights. And if you want to learn more about me or my positions, please visit voterradke.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Maria?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Maria Schmidt. It has been my honor and pleasure to serve the residents of our fine community for the past almost 17 years. I've been a resident and homeowner for 25 years. I'm married to the, I've been married for the past 26 years to my husband Bob, who was raised and has continued to live in Sterling Heights most of his life. We have two adult children, Jordan, who is in the Skilled Trades Program at Macomb Community College, and my daughter Natalie, who is pursuing a nursing degree at Saginaw Valley State University. I currently work as a Volk Ed paraprofessional in the Health Science Program at the Career Prep Center for Warren Consolidated Schools. We're members of St. Maliki Catholic Church, where I've enjoyed volunteering at the annual summer festival. After being an active BAM parent for the past 12 years, including seven years on the BAM Booster Executive Board, I can take pride in what I have contributed to the Sterling Heights BAM Boosters and the BAM program over the years, but now enjoy watching my daughter march on the field at the college level. I'm a new member of the Michigan Occupational Special Populations Association, MOSPA, Executive Board, helping professionals in education improve their programs for the students of special populations. I've also served as the past co-chair of the Health Advisory Board for Warren Consolidated Schools, and in my free time, enjoy volunteering for the Children's Tumor Foundation of Michigan, and in the past, St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, the National Kidney Foundation, MacRae's, and the American Cancer Society. I'm a graduate of Bishop Foley High School and attended Oakland Community College. I'd like to thank the Chamber for hosting the Meet the Candidates Forum this morning, giving the residents the opportunity to become more informed before they head to the polls in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Good morning. I'm Liz Sarowski, and I would like to thank the Chamber for hosting this event, and also my other candidates that are sitting here now, all of us here with us today, because it's very important that the voters are able to hear us, hear our thoughts, hear what we're thinking, and this is one of the best opportunities for that. About myself, I've been a resident of Sterling Heights for almost 30 years. I am married to Judge Steve Sarowski, also an active member of Sterling Heights, and been involved with his campaigns, and his involvement with the city for the entire 25 years that he has been a judge. I am a mother, a very proud mother of four wonderful young men. Tony, who is a Marine captain in the Marine Corps, and he's in Afghanistan right now. Patrick, who is a prosecutor for the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office. Stevie, my Steve Venn, who would prefer to be called Steve, is, he is a business graduate. He is, he is an entertainer, as well as an Uber driver, and he is, he is just a joy, I have to say. I love watching him play his music and entertaining. And my youngest, Nicholas, who is at Michigan State right now, Go Green, finally got a Spartan out of all four of those boys, and is enjoying probably going to be a lawyer. I currently am a graduate, have been a graduate of Michigan State University. I am a nurse by Education and Trade. I'm the Director of Professional Services for Heartland Home Care, based out of Ann Arbor at this time, and I truly enjoy what I do as a nurse. I've been a nurse for 30 years, almost 33 years now, and it is a vocation that I take great pride in, because it gives me an opportunity to understand people, to make sure, as an nurse, I'm always an advocate. So that is always my goal as councilwoman, to be advocates for our residents, and I take great pride in being able to be your voice. I was elected in 2008 as a Charter Commissioner, so I thank you for your opportunity to be here today, and we'll hand it over to Mr. Yanez now. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Henry Yanez. I am currently a member of Sterling Heights City Council. I was appointed in January of this year, 2018. Prior to that, I served as state representative, House District 25, which is the eastern half of Sterling Heights and a portion of the city of Warren, for three terms or six years. While I was in Lansing, I served on multiple committees, including Military and Veterans Affairs, Appropriations Committee, Commerce Committee, Energy Committee, Corrections, and Community Colleges. So I have a wide berth of knowledge and information that I've gained over the last six years working up in Lansing, that I think I can help bring to the city of Sterling Heights. And prior to being state representative, I was a firefighter/paramedic here for the city of Sterling Heights Fire Department for 18 years, a job that I truly loved. I am a father, a father of two. My son Ryan's chiropractor, my daughter Allison's emergency room nurse over at Beaumont Troy, both of them went to Central Michigan University, Fire Up Chips. And I am the father of two stepdaughters, and the grandfather of three adorable grandchildren. I certainly enjoy, I don't call myself a politician, I call myself an elected community activist. That's how I consider myself. I try to be involved as much as possible. I do Meals on Wheels deliveries twice a month. I'm involved with Maple Lane Elementary School, a school for children with emotional disabilities. We help them every year get backpacks, school supplies, food during the holidays, issues like that. I've been heavily involved with Clinton River Watershed Council, doing river cleanups, especially the Plum Brook Drain, which runs behind my condo. Not only do I clean it up, I get lots of golf balls out of there. Thank you, golfers over at Plum Brook Golf Course, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And so that's, and that's what I love to do, that's really what my passion is, and I just appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Barbara?
Hi. Good morning. I'm Barb Zarco, and I'm currently serving in my 18th year on the City Council. I became a resident and homeowner in Sterling Heights 42 years ago when I married my husband Tom. Tom was a Chrysler retiree, and we were married for 36 and a half years until his death in 2014. We have a daughter Stacy, who is the President and CEO of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce. I have an associate's degree from McComb Community College, and have been an active member of St. Blaise Catholic Community since 1977. I am technically retired after working 27 years for St. Anne's Parish and School in Warren and St. Blaise Church in Sterling Heights. I currently work part-time for WW, which is formerly Weight Watchers. I've served as the President of the Regina High School Board of Directors, I've been a local volunteer for the St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, care of southeast Michigan, THAW, the Heat and Warm Fund, and the Pope Francis Center located in Detroit that serves the homeless. I'm a member of the Friends of the Sterling Heights Library, and the American Polis Century Club, as well as a member of the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. I'm a graduate of the Police and Fire Academies, as well as a silent member of our CERT team here in Sterling Heights. In addition, I've served as President of our Homeowners Association, and once, and I always say, last but not least, I was a Girl Scout leader for many, many years. Recently, I was elected to serve on the Michigan Municipal Board of Trustees, and I look forward to representing the Sterling Heights at the state level. I feel that my personal life reflects that I am a woman of service. The many volunteer positions that I've held have prepared me to work with many individuals to reach a common goal through cooperation, compromise, and respect. I'm grateful for the opportunity to introduce myself again to the community, and thank you to the Chamber for sponsoring this event.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you, candidates. And now we'll start off with the questioning, and the first question will go to Michael Radke. Michael, the most controversial public expenditure for 2018, 2019 was the purchase and installation of the halo. The large golden ring located on M-59, and two smaller but similar themed signs to the east and west along the corridor. In your view, was the expenditure a worthwhile idea that helps to enhance the city's image, or was it a waste of taxpayers' dollars at a time when funding for road repair is greatly needed?
What a great question to start the day. You know, one of the first votes I took when I was elected to the City Council was on the Golden Halo Project. It was brought forward by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, you know, working through the multiple communities along what they're calling the Golden Corridor, which is Hall Road. And part of it was to enhance the corridor. You know, we have a Lakeside Mall project there right now, where Lakeside is slowly a little bit diminishing, and we're hoping that in the future, it'll be the site of, hopefully, a downtown for Sterling Heights. We visited Lakewood, Colorado, to view a similar mall that had fallen into decline, was demolished, and then a street grid and downtown was created. When they brought the halo project forward, it was a way to both enhance the mall and kind of placemake in Sterling Heights. And I think it's succeeded in its goals. You know, I see the criticism, and some people will always make fun of cities trying to do new and innovative things, but I just watched the other day, Mary McDonald, Channel 4, and she set up in front of the halo to talk about construction in Chesterfield Township on M-59. And I asked her, I actually called her, I said, "Mary, why did you set up in front of the halo?" She said, "Because it's the only place that really marks something on Sterling Heights. Otherwise, I'm going to view a parking lot or a freeway exchange." It's kind of become a place in the community which can be viewed. So I think that that just shows the success, and also, I think all publicity is good publicity. Nowhere in my time in Sterling Heights, in the 20 years I've lived here, has people been talking about Sterling Heights so much. You know, people say it's good or it's bad, but if you come to Sterling Heights, and you spend gas, and you buy lunch here, and you visit the halo, then it's been a success. And I think it is a success, and I also think that it helped pay for the Hall Road improvements. You know, we have to do so much to improve the side of the roadway, and that was part of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria?
I have to say that when this was brought before us, and some of the timing issues of approving this, I had conversations with Mr. Vanderpoel that I was a little apprehensive about it. Originally, the project was to be three of the rings along Hall Road, and two of the other two communities backed out of following through with that. So we initiated the process, it was supposed to go into Clinton Township and head towards 94. That didn't happen, the other communities backed out, so we have our halo. As Mr. Radke said, I think, you know, from a marketing standpoint, people came from all over to see the halo, and that's exactly what that was set out to do. Did we spend the money? We did spend the money, but it was with the intention of other communities following through and having that golden corridor be from Sterling Heights all the way to 94, and that didn't happen. So, of course, we take the brunt of those jokes. I think we, in hindsight, it was a good investment, it brought people to our community, for whatever reason, they came to see the halo. And it's here, so let's move on.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you. I, too, was quite apprehensive about the halo. It was a project that had been initiated prior to me being on council, came onto it with the intention, but not completely funded at that point, and I thought it was really awfully expensive, beautiful little piece of artwork. Being an art person myself, I thought, okay, let's see how it goes. I am pleasantly and happily surprised, as my other council members, current council members have stated, because it does do what it was meant to do. It draws attention, it gives us something to look as an icon and as a brand, gives us an opportunity to speak about and talk about Sterling Heights. And that's what we want. We want to improve this community, give it our mark on the world, and on Michigan especially, and give people the opportunity to see us, not just as the halo, it might be what attracts them, it might be something that they see, but they're also able to see other things, because that halo is on a major, extremely major roadway. And that is an opportunity for us to spend more money, to bring in more money, and to continue to improve Sterling Heights. So I'm happy to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry?
So I think the halo is very iconic, and will play in a
So I think the halo is very iconic and will play an important part in the development of the entire region. You know, when I was on the Commerce Committee in Lansing, one of the things I learned about was the idea of talent in place, creating a place to attract talent. And I think that's what the halo does. I'm a big believer in public art. I think it really sets us aside from other communities and you see that in large, major cities across the country. But we are a smaller city, rather, city. Did I say country? I meant city. But we are, really, even though we're the fourth largest city in the state, we're still, in some aspects, a small town as well. And our dollars, our tax dollars are very important in how we spend those tax dollars. We are down personnel across the board in this city, in all departments. And so I really feel that we should look at creating place, attracting talent, moving forward with our art projects. But I really feel very strongly that we need to start paying for this art through things like foundations. We need to set up maybe a public art foundation or something and start raising that money. There are people who will give us money for art projects. We don't have to spend taxpayer dollars. And I think we can have, I think we can have it both ways. I think we can have our public art and I think we can pay for it, not through tax dollars, but contributions. So I strongly feel very positively about moving forward with our public art programs, but I think we can pay for it a different way.
Thank you. Barbara?
Simply, I love it for a lot of reasons. And that, it was something that, when it was first presented to us, I realized that we might get some feedback on the cost. But this was also in cooperation with MDOT. We knew that there was going to be a budget. We knew that we were going to enhance M-59. We knew the money, the billions of dollars in industry and business that are in that corridor, we knew we were making an investment, not just in Sterling Heights, but any city that abuts that corridor. So we want to bring attention to it. And I think this was one way to do it. This was part of an established budget. It was part of landscaping and art and we fulfill that obligation by putting it in there. Now, other communities chose, after all of the controversy, not to do it. So I think it's even better that we have the only one. I think with the, our future in redevelopment of Lakeside, what better way to bring attention to Sterling Heights but to have it there? And depending on what happens there, and we don't know how soon that's going to be, but when you have almost 100 acres of developable property on the main corridor of Macomb County, certainly, that might not be what attracts people there, but people will notice it. I also like the idea that if you look at other landmarks and the way they change their colors for different occasions. I noticed we've had it orange, we've had it red, white, and blue. This month is going to be pink for breast cancer awareness. So it's part of people seeing it, knowing that we are in tune with the different issues that are in our, that are happening in the county. So I like it. I think it's part of place making. I think it's something that sometimes people don't think of as a need, but it is a benefit and it benefits all of us because in the long run, the businesses in that area love it. They love it and they want to be there. So I love it.
Thank you. Brian?
There's an axiom in the entertainment business, good attention, bad attention, it's all attention. That's not working with the golden ring. If you look on the internet, there's a famous video on there that I saw parodying the golden ring as a roller coaster. I'm a big proponent of performing arts and visual arts, being a professional entertainer myself. But when I heard about the golden ring, I was flabbergasted. I look at the front entrance of the library, literally crumbling. There's missing bricks. There's other examples. I've heard people, patrons of the library, tell me the computer system is a dinosaur and such issues like that. The golden ring would have been fine if it would have been funded 100% by businesses from the get-go. Again, like I said, I'm a proponent of performing arts and visual arts, but I just don't think the golden ring was a good expenditure of our money. What can I say? You can't, what good is purifying a city from the outside in? If you, literally, I read the other day about the flood in the police station that's forcing some police officers to move to a location in Utica. A lot of people from outside the community come into this community. And again, I believe we need to work inside and go outside. Purifying the community from the outside in just is not the right approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Well, art and beauty are both in the eye of the beholder. Personally, I'm not a fan of the sculpture itself. And I'm certain there were probably better allocations for the money. However, the halo has certainly served its purpose. It has brought more people to our city and it has quickly turned into our city's landmark. There's no such thing as bad publicity. I agree with that and, well, there's been quite a bit of publicity with this. No matter how many very, very, very creative names people come up with for it, and it does manage to bring people out to our city and it does bring businesses here. I agree 100% that this should have been funded through public art in any way that we possibly could. In fact, I'd like to see our public art continue forward and increase in that as well. And I'm sure the money could have found a better place, but at the end of the day, the sculpture has done what it was intended to do. It has become a landmark of our city and it has drawn people here, whether for good or bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine?
You just took part of my closing speech. The city spent almost half a million dollars building golden circles in the middle of Hall Road. That had to be maintained at additional cost. We had to take that in consideration. Could the money be better spent, as Brian mentioned, fits in the library? You go there and you just, in the facade, you will find things that need to be fixed. As somebody who was in the Arts Commission, am an architect myself, I don't know about art. I love art. However, I don't think we needed a halo, which, by the way, it's interesting that a halo, we always think about the shape in the opposite way and we had this halo in the other way. But the point is, there is another city who did previously, the same idea of the, they call it the friendship ring. The residents call it the toilet seat. Whether the name you choose to put to the golden rings, I really believe that was a waste of money. Those other cities that back up from being part of this project, they did it with a wise reason. We cannot charge residents and business to our city being better stewards of the money that is given to us as the ones managing the money. Could be fund by the businesses, could be other resources, but not the city that's paying your money, paying for costly projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna?
The Golden Corridor. A while back, Mount Road was known as the Golden Corridor. I guess it was so catchy that the powers that be thought that would be a good name for Hall Road. So Mount Road no longer was the Golden Corridor, but Hall Road was the Golden Corridor, with the improvements and all the businesses to draw attention there and to really make it a nice-looking highway. Sterling Heights has always been a leader, so of course, when it was suggested that the golden rings go up, we said, yes, let's do it. The other cities that were involved backed out. So being the leaders that we are, we did it. It's accomplished what it was set out to do, and that's to draw attention. A destination place, a place to say, okay, this is where Sterling Heights is. This is where the mall is. This is where all the businesses are. This is the place to go. As it's been said, we have lighting features there so that we can turn different lights on. I'm sure that Valentine's Day will be red and so on and so forth. So it can be improved. I would like it to have been a little more like a golden corridor, rather just a golden ring. Maybe there's something that we can do to dress it up a little bit more so that it doesn't really look like a circle. So I'm hoping that somebody will be very creative and come up with some additional ideas to make it a little more attractive.
Thank you. You're doing great on timing, so I appreciate that. The second question will go to Jasmine Early. Jasmine, the increasingly diverse makeup of our city's population has resulted in a fusion of many different cultures, with immigrants from all corners of the world represented. Some of our local schools report having student bodies with more than 25 different native languages spoken in the home. Should our city make any new accommodations to facilitate the needs of non-English speaking residents?
That is a wonderful question, especially since I am an immigrant myself, American citizen, who know the need of the English language, which I appreciate. I had private teachers. I went to ESL, English as a Second Language classes. Few years ago, in Utica Community School District, there was a meeting regarding the school accommodation for students from other countries and the improvement of the language, the English. And I firmly believe that we, as Americans now, even in this country, we need to be accommodated in a better way to be able to have more resources to learn the English language. We, I mean, in my home, we speak two languages. And for the students at the school, even though they are coming, and this is not a nuisance, America has been a melting pot forever. In the schools, getting the students to encourage them to, as I say at the beginning and the opening, the assimilation to this country is a wonderful thing. I'm blessed to be in this country. I'm blessed to be able to sit in this forum, be able to speak to the residents and tell them how much I love the country. I would love to meet with the school boards and create those programs that we are going to make those communities attracted to America and to the blessings that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna?
Sterling Heights has been a very diverse community in all the years that I have served on council. We created the Ethnic Commission years ago, I can't tell you what year. But the purpose was to be able to let all residents know more about their neighbor. The diversity dinner that we put on, teaching English as a second language in the schools, believe it's a school at Dodge Park and 17 Mile Road, which they do for additional training of people that would like to learn English. Can we do more? We can always do more. If someone has an idea as to how to make it a little bit more welcoming, we're always open for that. There's different programs that take place throughout the year, the Welcoming Michigan, the New Resident Forum that we put on, where we give information out to the residents. We used to publish different information in different languages. We have TV programs that are presented in different languages also. So I would say that we're doing quite a bit, and I've probably forgotten half of what is available, but we're always open for new ideas to welcome the non-first English-speaking family into the community.
Thank you. Michael?
Will you read the question again, please?
Certainly. The increasingly diverse makeup of the city's population has resulted in a fusion of many different cultures, with immigrants from all corners of the world represented. Some of our local schools report having student bodies with more than 25 different languages spoken in the home. Should our city make any new accommodations to facilitate the needs of non-English speaking residents?
Thank you. I believe that our city is already accommodating to our non-native speaking residents. I read a report recently that 30% of our city is foreign-born, our residents. They were born someplace else and they've chosen to make Sterling Heights their home. That's wonderful. My own grandfather came from Sicily and made Sterling Heights his home. He learned English. He assimilated into the community. He was more American than anyone I can ever think of. And that's what we want to have in Sterling Heights, people from around the globe who want to come here for our excellent services, our low taxes, the things that make Sterling Heights unique. And I think that that's wonderful for our economy, too. They work very hard. I know that I read a report also that said that foreign-born residents tend to open small businesses and be more entrepreneurial. I think that's great for our economy. So, you know, diversity is one of Sterling Heights' great strengths and I think that we need to work to continue to, both assimilate them to the community, but meet them where they are. We have a census coming up, a complete count. We need to make sure every citizen is counted, no matter what language they speak. So I think while we do so much to assimilate people, we also have to make sure that everyone, no matter what language they speak, is getting the full raft of services from the city of Sterling Heights and are able to both do anything they want here. I know one thing the police department is working on is, one, hiring more non-native English, not non-native, but people who speak second or third language so that they can speak with the residents. We've also equipped all of our officers with little comment cards in different languages so if they pull over a driver who might not speak English, instead of creating a negative situation, they can try to communicate better to make sure that there's a successful outcome of the traffic stop or the encounter. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria?
Thank you. I have to say, one of the things I love most about Sterling Heights is our diversity and the opportunities that we get to learn about each other and accept each other and our differences. What we tend to find out is we're more alike than we are different. And a lot of communities don't have the opportunity because they are not, do not have that diversity within their community. So that's one of the things I really love about Sterling Heights. That being said, as far as making accommodations, I believe that's already been done. Utica Community Schools, Warren Consolidated Schools, I work in the school, I know how diverse that population is. Both have ESL classes for both the students in the child level and also evening adult education classes. The CalDium Foundation has ESL classes available. Our police and fire and DPW have met time and time again in places of worship within other cultures to let them know that they are welcome here regardless of what their experience was maybe in their native land. We have employees throughout the organization that are bilingual or trilingual and are readily available if that opportunity is needed. So I think that we really do try to help anyone who is having, you know, any issues communicating. We do, we do have things in place and the community at large has things in place to help accommodate them and make them feel more welcome and more part of the community. Thank you.
Liz?
I love, like many have said, the diversity of this community. It is a joy to meet others in the different cultures that you would not have been able to experience necessarily. And this is something that makes, it does set us apart. I see the diversity being a very strong and very important factor in Sterling Heights. So our job on council and the city government is to make sure that we're facilitating opportunities for the residents who do not natively speak or naturally first language speak English to have those opportunities to learn the language and to make sure that they are understanding of the culture, especially things that are important to them, like if they're stopped by the police or if they have a fire, they're able to communicate. One of the things that I have the opportunity as a nurse, and it is a mandate from the government, that we provide alternative languages, primary language to people who are not native to speaking English. We have what's called a language line and I am going to provide that to both city government. It's a non- it's a non- it's a non-for-profit, it's a language line where you literally can use your phone, call that line, ask for a language, and within 30 seconds, there will be a person to translate. You speak into the phone, say what you need, go forward. So I think that that would be something very beneficial to our city workers, and I'm going to encourage that we use that because it's not an extra dollar out of our pocket, but it's an available service. And that's something that's important, that we facilitate the opportunity of services. So that is what I think our role is, and we need to continue to do that in city council and government. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry?
I think it's a great investment because it's really all about moving people forward and then helping them succeed so they become productive, tax-paying citizens to the community. Like everybody else here in this room and at this panel, you know, my grandparents all came from somewhere else. My grandmother never spoke English. She spoke Spanish her entire life. I'm working with a woman right now who's a guardian of an 80-year-old Polish couple who've lived in this country for 40 years, and they still only speak Polish, but yet they've somehow became productive citizens. So I think it's a good investment that we do use language skills, other language skills to help students succeed. You know, one of the things that I'm very concerned about is making sure that, English is very important, and right now, third-grade reading levels are very important in the state. We're below average across the country in the state of Michigan on third-grade reading levels. And if we can help kids become better readers by speaking to them initially in their native language and helping them grow into speaking and reading better English, then I think that's a fantastic investment. So I fully support that. And do I get points for saving time? I'm all done. Thank you.
Again, I have to agree with my fellow candidates that diversity is growth. And we certainly have a lot of diversity in Sterling Heights, which means we're always growing. I come from a background where I was involved in an international festival back when I was very young, but there are some things in your life that make an impact that follow you for the rest of your life. And in that, I learned the commonality of all of us rather than the differences. And I still see that in our community today. As far as what we can do as far as English as a second language, I think it isn't just something that we can do on our own. Currently, we depend on our school districts to help us, the ethnic foundations, the churches, literacy programs. I know that the library actually provides space by appointment if there's somebody that's working to, as a tutor. We provide a space for them to meet so that they can tutor an individual that's interested in learning the English language. It's also been brought to our attention that we need employees that speak different languages, and we've been doing that. And we rejoice when we can hire somebody that is bilingual. So this is definitely a benefit. So it's another area that we've been working in. But I really think that we have to not just consider, we can always do better. We are doing a good job, but we could do better. And, but those would be resources maybe that we could approach from the county level to state and the state level to find out what resources are available to us and to our residents. And I think we're doing a fine job with that right now, but if we get any information, we usually do pass it along. And certainly, a lot of this depends on volunteers and their time and their ability to help one another out. But that's pretty much what it is. It's neighbor helping neighbor, resident helping resident.
Thank you. Brian?
When I accepted Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior some 30 years ago, I was given the command to go forth and reach out to people of all beliefs or no belief. Diversity, diversity encompasses more than just culture. Diversity is also, should encompass political beliefs, sexual orientation, and many other aspects. That's one reason, again, as I accepted Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior, I decided to run because it's time for new voices with new ideas to step up and take leadership roles in this city. As an entertainer, I've worked with, I've worked, or as a paper distributor, I have worked with many different diverse peoples. And as a city councillor, the one thing I'd like to do is bring diversity to the city council. I believe the city council is becoming an elected elite social club. If I'm elected to the city council, I intend on laying the groundwork to pursue a petition drive for a charter amendment to okay term limits in Sterling Heights. I think that's the best way we can ensure diversity in this city by getting new voices with new ideas from, as I said, all different cultures, sexual orientations, political persuasions, religious beliefs or non-beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
All righty. Well, I definitely agree with Brian on one thing here. It definitely is time for some new young voices to get involved in the city, just saying. So, our city is a perfect representation of this whole nation's culture. We are the melting pot here in Sterling Heights. And I agree that we've done a fantastic job, and our school districts have done a fantastic job to accommodate residents who do not speak English or where the English is their second language, maybe it's not their strong suit. And I agree that we should go forward and attempt to find any further accommodations that we can. In any way that we're not accommodating our residents currently, it is our job to find a way to accommodate them going forward. A lot of people I've heard using the word assimilation in this question actually uses the term assimilation, and that I don't entirely agree with. I believe that our culture, both as a nation and as a city, is built on a culmination of everybody's culture coming together. And the idea that we should assimilate to one American culture, the beauty of the American culture is that it is a combination of the cultures from everywhere across the world, and that is what I strive to push forward here in our Sterling Heights.
Thank you. Question number three, we'll start with Barbara Ziarco. Sterling Heights has used voter-approved tax funds to build parks, facility, facilities, and attractions for its residents. Has this effort reached its peak, or do you feel there are still more activities that could be added in years to come? And if so, what would you like to see on that shopping list?
Certainly, we have seen the benefits of recreating recreation here in the city. This is a 20-year plan. We, right now, are funding everything that we thought we would do in that proposal. We've got parks, improvements, trails, certainly playground equipment. So I think that we have covered a great deal as far as what people were interested in, between the skate park and an ice rink, the farmer's market, certainly providing music in the park on Thursday nights. We've done a lot, and we've certainly been accountable for the monies that we're spending, but over the long range, built into that was that we would be, you know, maintain everything that we were building. So I think eventually, after the new recreation building is open, if anything, we were going to expand, I think would be the programs that we can offer there as far as the different talents that our teachers we could bring in, could teach our residents. So I would say, if anything in the future, I don't see another building, but I do see an amenity as the need or the want comes up, that the money would be there, and that's what it's intended for in a special fund. But I guess more importantly is that whatever it is that we continue to maintain what we have, and it's certainly, the money spent on our recreation program certainly is well-known throughout the state now. So I think it was a good investment for all of us. I think the real estate market here in Sterling Heights, we just got a map of the real estate, the prices of homes selling, and we noticed that the homes that are closer to Dodge Park are now selling for more money. So I think we made a great investment there, and I think we'll continue to make improvements as well as maintain what we do have.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, one of the items in my platform is fiscal discipline. As a newspaper distributor and professional entertainer, I've learned fiscal discipline through kitchen table finances. If you don't have the money, don't spend it. One thing, if I'm elected to the city council, sure, there will be no war on cops in our city, as I said before. I just read the other day that some cops will have to move to a location in Utica because of flood in the police station. One thing I would like to see is eventually a new police station. And I just think we need to be, we need to be more creative with our financing. It's, the first thing a lot of people think of is go to the taxpayers and have, ask them to dig out of their pocket for money. I think we could be creative by more public-private partnerships or just going straight out to corporations and say, asking them if they would like to donate to this or that project. For example, a lot of people tell me that the computer system in the library is a dinosaur. I've heard so many complaints about that. And again, if you look at the front facade of the library, it's literally crumbling. We could easily go to corporations and ask them to donate, to step up. This is their community, too. Again, it's kitchen table financing, and I just don't believe that the first thing to do is ask people to dig out of their own pockets. Fiscal discipline. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Well, I feel like this is one of the times where a one-word answer would actually suffice a pool. Going forward, of course, that's something that many, many residents are upset that we are not providing. Of course, there are also many residents who would be upset if we wound up taxing them for a pool. So I agree that we've done a fantastic job with our parks, our, the, I don't want to say reproduction, but the money investment that we've put into our parks has created a fantastic park system here. It's really updated our system. One thing that personally, and maybe this is a good thing, being a young person and being so close to the age where I was, just in Parks and Recreation four or five years ago, I would like to see eventually built separate facilities for the softball and baseball fields for our Parks and Recreation Department. Currently, our softball players are playing on fields that are significantly too large for softball dimensions, and our baseball players are having to use no pitcher's mound except for the flat surface that is provided by the field because it would interfere with the softball player. So if there was one thing aside from a pool, which is the obvious answer, to upgrade our parks going forward, it would be providing separate facilities so that we could create better facilities that would bring our athletes up in a better way.
Thank you. Jasmine?
Could you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. Sterling Heights has used voter-approved tax funds to build new parks, facilities, and attractions for its residents. Has this effort reached its peak, or do you feel there are still more activities that could be added in years to come? And if so, what would you like to see on that shopping list?
I think the Parks and Recreation proposal got a lot of services that are provided now that the residents are enjoying. I was not okay with the whole proposal, but I'm happy that it got voted in, the projects are there, and we had, we participate using the parks, and we walk a lot in the parks. We use the splash park with my son. Now he's getting older, so that is knowing his age range. So we need, I believe that to move forward with these recreating recreation programs, I would agree with Mrs. Ziarco that it's more about what type of programs we are gonna be bringing to our city, especially for teenagers. We used to have a liberty park where young adults will be, and adults will be playing softball. My husband used to work there. It closed. We lost those fields. We don't really have enough fields to play. There are only a few ones. The pool, but going back, the pool is something that also the residents had asked a lot. But people mentioned the liability, the cost, the maintenance will be something that the council may have to consider after we get done building all the projects that were proposed to be built in the next few years. The, we need to ask the residents. I mean, it would be wonderful to start in this moment, asking them, do you think that we need certain programs or certain projects to be, to improve our recreating recreation facilities and programs, especially if you have teenagers. I had one. I would like to see more things for teenagers. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna?
We have done, from what I recall, two surveys within the last 25 years, asking the people, what is it that you want? Now, we have a fantastic recreating recreation program that we have accomplished so far. But you have to understand also that we did such a fantastic job at Dodge Park that traffic there is unbelievable on a Thursday night. You can't find a parking spot, and you're going to park like a half a mile away and then walk in. So how about maybe some recreation at the south end of the city? Sterling Heights is 36 square miles plus a little bit. So what about the south end? We've got Nelson Park there as an example, which is a beautiful park. It's on the north side, it's on the south side of 15 Mile Road. Beautiful, nice scenic. Why couldn't we do another attraction at some of the parks at the south end of the city? And I'm sure that there is a big enough park on the east side, maybe some, what is it called, that disc throwing and not really up on some of the activities, or maybe another skate park down at that end to relieve some of the congestion at the north end. But maybe we should do a survey again and say, are there any other recreational facilities that you residents would like us to do?
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. I take a little issue with the question. You know, you say a shopping list. I say an investment. We're investing $42 million in our recreating recreation program. It's a wonderful program, and we've seen improvements across the board. There are 26 parks in the city. One thing that I've always been advocate for, I live at 15 Mile in Van Dyke, we need a southern recreation center. Everybody has to come north to really enjoy a lot of the activities that we have. Almost all of our major parks are in the northern part of the city. We do more for the south end. And I also think that we should have a pool. I advocated for a pool before recreating recreation. I advocate for a pool now. It's the number one thing I hear from residents on the doors and on the phone. They really would like a pool. I think it's something that we have to add. I know it's gonna be an expensive choice, but I mean, you know, we did ask the residents about recreating recreation. It was voter-approved. You know, a majority of residents who came out and voted said, we want this. And I think that we have to hear them. You know, I think we can continue to add new activities while also improving our current parks. I mean, I love walking around the new Dodge Park. I think it's fascinating. I get so many compliments. I went to the MML and to other activities, and I have city council members or county commissioners or even state representatives coming and saying, I brought my child to the splash pad at Dodge Park. It's wonderful. I recently biked through Dodge Park or one of the other parks like Farmstead. It's beautiful. And I think that that's what's attracting new, young families to Sterling Heights. It's what's gonna improve our tax base for the future. So it's not a shopping list. It's an improvement that was a long time coming, and we are winning accolades across the state for all the improvements we've done.
Thank you. Maria?
Thank you. So when the recreating recreation proposal was presented to city council, we kind of went through it, and the pool was a big bit of the discussion. There were two reasons why a pool wasn't included. A, the piece of property was not big enough to accommodate a pool. With the existence of the church that is there, and they were, they are not, to my knowledge, interested in selling their piece of property. The second reason is, it would have, because of the way recreating recreation was drafted, we have allowed for our expenditures, our maintenance costs throughout the 20 years, to be included in with that millage. A pool would have added another... A pool would have added another $10 million to that millage, which I think was a significant increase in the millage rate and I believe would have jeopardized the whole thing being approved by the voters. The vision of recreating recreation was displayed numerous times over and over again to the residents. They knew upfront there was no pool, they knew what amenities were going to be enhanced or improved and added as well. So, I don't think there were any surprises to the voters on what was or what was not included in recreating recreation. We have a 20-year vision, a 20-year plan, and I am so proud of the buzz that that plan has created over the last couple of years. It has brought people to our community, it has brought joy to our community. We, you see people smiling and enjoying each other every single day, be it in the soccer fields or be it at the skate park. Everyone's having fun in Sterling Heights and I think that's really important to stay focused on.
Thank you. Liz?
I have to say that 30 years ago when we moved here, it was a good city, but recreating recreation truly did make it a great city. We live right in the backyard here of City Hall and can walk to Dodge Park. And I really didn't come to Dodge Park that often with my children when they were young. I have been to Dodge Park more this year than I think I had been in the last 15 years or 30 total. It has really improved our city. What I would love to see for my shopping list, because I do have a little bit of a list, I do like to shop, is I would like to, and I agree with Councilwoman Radke, we do need to develop the southern end of our city. And the other parks that are already there do give us that opportunity. We could put, the ball fields that have been suggested may be able to fit in there, although I do think there's a way to make a pitcher's mound that's portable. So, that might be another opportunity to save some money. But we do want to make sure that all of the residents have equal access to our facilities and our amenities. So, I think a southern portion would be great. Yes, a pool would be fantastic, but it might be cost prohibitive still. It is a very expensive expenditure that's not going away. Warren had to close one of their pools a couple of years ago because it just wasn't getting the use that it needed to and it was so expensive to maintain. So, we have to consider all of the options, not just the great amenities that we do have, in order to continue to provide the citizens what they really want through that recreating recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry?
So, I certainly don't think we've hit our peak. You know, this is a very dynamic issue and as time goes on and the face of Sterling Heights changes, there's gonna be other, you know, different demands on, on the needs of the citizens and certainly that applies to parks and recreation too. I, I, I get feedback on both sides of the issue about the dog park and some people are very upset that we're spending money on a dog park. But if you know a senior citizen who lives alone and their only companionship is a dog, you also know that senior probably doesn't get a chance to exercise that dog. And now with this dog park, that, that person's gonna be able to take the dog to the dog park, the dog's gonna get exercised, that senior citizen's gonna be able to socialize with other people at the dog park. So, it's gonna bring people together. So, you know, not everything that we do at Parks and Recreation is for everybody, but we need to do a little bit of something for everybody. And so, that's, that's why, whether it's a pool, it's a dog park, a skateboard park, which I don't use, but I enjoy watching the people use it, I think it's a little something for everybody. You know, what's on my wish list or what would I like to see? Well, and let me just say this too, you know, we talk about place-making and bringing people here to Sterling Heights. My daughter, I'm ashamed to say, moved to Shelby Township. But where does she bring my grandson to play? To Dodge Park, the splash pad, the, the playground. So, we're bringing people in from all over just to come to, to our park that we're all paying for. But people are gonna move here to Sterling Heights when they come here and they go, what are the, you know, why would I want to live in the city? Great schools, safe community, great parks for my kids, right? I would like to see more investment in the tree canopy in our neighborhood parks. That's one of the things I've heard, we, we put picnic tables in there, but there's no cover. So, I'd like to see an increase in the tree canopy. And I also, I would also like to see the city create a second nature preserve through DNR grants and specifically, and I'm gonna be a bit of a homer on this, I live off of Utica Road. Utica Road's a disaster, especially the intersection of Utica and Hayes. We have that vacant property that they're, they're now trying to rezone for multi, multifamily. And I just can't see more and more cars pulling out on Utica Road without doing something with that road. And I think it'd be great if the city actually applied for DNR grants and maybe purchased that property, create a nature preserve for the animals that we do have left here that we all enjoy in the city. So, that's it.
Thank you. The next question, we'll go to Maria. Six. The Sterling Heights 2030 Visioning Plan that was approved in 2014 states that our city should become a place with abundant pathways for walking and biking. Yet in 2018, the city council rejected a plan proposed by the county drain commissioner to transform the east-west Sterling Relief Drain running between 15 and 16 mile roads into a linear park, complete with a biking and walking trail due to the concerns of the residents living along the drain. Should the council have approved the linear park?
Well, I would say that I spoke in, not in favor of having that linear park. And part of my rationale was during times of storm, the water rushes through that area at such a rate that I felt it was a safety risk. I, I don't regret having that feeling. I think keeping our residents safe is important. We have plenty of trail systems within our city, that being one of them. I just couldn't grasp the, the safety, the safety issue that went along with it.
Thank you. Liz?
Well, let's remember that that is county property. And so, we did not vote, or we voted to give a recommendation to the county that was in favor of rejecting that proposal. We didn't vote on that project, that project had nothing, we did not have any jurisdiction over that project. So, although it is always nice on paper to have more parks and to have more beautiful amenities, it was the county's responsibility to take care of that. And with saying that, we had such an outcry from the local residents who are completely, their property's abut that, not just because of the invasion of having other people in their backyard, but also that safety risk. And that was my, truly my greatest concern. I think that yes, the county does need to and I very much welcome them developing that property with trees, plantings, to increase some of the nature and the animals that can come into that area. But it was not a good use of that property to have it be a walking park. It was not safe. It's, as I've seen it flooded, filled right to the rim of that, that drain. And no matter where you put the path, it was going to be at the edge and it would have gotten flooded or people could have been too close, especially children. So, that was my greatest concern and I am very happy to see that they are developing it with what they are using. It is county property and they're using grant fund, grant funds, excuse me, and other monies that they can find. So, that is the best use and the best stewardship of that property that I could see. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry?
Yeah, so this is a bit of equivalent to the Detroit Lions, right? It looks good on paper, you know, but in reality, it was gonna be a difficult, difficult process. As someone who likes to bike, I would have liked the idea of having a bike path going east-west through that property. But the fact of the matter is, I think Councilwoman Saroski brings up several good points, you know, the difficulty, it is what it is. It's a ditch, you know, for stormwater. So, and it also abutted to people's backyards, people had safety concerns and I completely get that. And ultimately, I, I think we're now using it as a better purpose, you know, for the, for the pollinator garden. So, I think as much as it sounded like a good idea, I think ultimately it's gonna be used for a much better idea and I, I think we're good with that.
Thank you. Barbara?
I think we can all agree that that drain needed improvements. That was the common focus, is that it did need improvements and how were we going, how was it going to be improved? But let's remember that the council did not vote on that up or down. The county actually withdrew their project. So, and it had to do, I'm sure, with the feedback that they were getting from the residents that live there, as well as the county commissioners that represent Sterling Heights were also getting phone calls from the residents saying that, that lived there that didn't think it was going to work out. Personally, when we talk about paths that go behind people's homes, it's not something that would bother me if I lived there. But I'm here to listen to residents and I know that it was one of their concerns. So, my, my, I would have used it. I'm sure, I'm only half a mile from there, so I'm sure I would have either walked it or been on my bike, but I certainly had, would have used whatever they were going to put there. But my biggest concern was there was really no plan to go over the major streets because you would have come out of, you know, the first street, if you were going from east to west, would have been Shaner. Then it would have been Dodge Park. There would, there's no crossing in, in, in those areas, so you would still have had to go to the crosswalk if, at Canterbury, Canterbury over, then come back to the path. At Dodge Park, you would have had to go back to Canterbury again and cross the street. So, there was no easy access crossing those streets. The other problem was going through Shap because you would have had to go on probably Metro Parkway to get around the industrial corridor there. So, it wasn't a clean, it wasn't a clean path. So, I think that was more of what I objected to was I saw safety issues, you know, as far as crossing those streets. But I think it is being developed now and, or redeveloped at a, for a better need and a purpose. So, I think it all worked out.
Thank you. Brian?
I agree with the city council on this. Sometimes things look great on paper, but in reality, aren't that great. The name of the game here, you have to, the first consideration has to be those who live in the area, the residents of Sterling Heights. I believe, you know, our money, I'm not opposed to spending money on worthwhile projects, but I believe in spending money well and wisely. So...
Thank you. Nicholas?
I would like to strive to make the city of Sterling Heights a city that is walkable and bikable north to south and east to west for those who can't afford cars or those who like to take runs, those who like to take bike rides. While this was not an especially ideal pathway, I would have definitely loved seeing this drain turned into a pathway. Now, obviously, again, we all agree, something needed to be done and clearly it is going to a great use now, especially with the endangerment of the bees, but I think this is a fantastic use for it currently. I personally would have loved to have seen a pathway there because it's important that our streets are not only passable by car, but also by bike and on foot and in cases that they're not, we should build pathways.
Thank you. Jasmine?
I was part of the core group that fought to stop the, that bypass. The residents got together, gathered hundreds of signatures to ask the county to stop the project for several reasons. The consent was that it was redundant since we had sidewalks to use. It was a liability for kids if there was a heavy rain and the drain flooded. I saw pictures that could cause a big liability to the city and the county. It was an unnecessary expense of six to eight million dollars that we didn't need it. Me and the residents brought up to the council. It was a between council, even though the council didn't have the, they were not the one making the decision or voting for it. It was asking the council to work on behalf of the residents with the county. We, the residents ended up meeting with Mrs. Miller, the DP, at the county commissioners' offices. And after several meetings, we got to the, the, the county made the decision to stop the project. It was a great relief for the residents because they were concerned about their safety, they were concerned about what will cause to the city to, there were families that had, one had an autistic kid and we was concerned about his kids playing outside, the heavy traffic that will be there at that point. I'm grateful the county listened to the residents and it was stopped. And I love to see the butterfly park that is projected to be there and they are working on it and the residents are relieved that there is no, no abort on them anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna?
The Sterling Relief Drain, as it's been said, is under the control of Macomb County. What they're doing now, cleaning it up, fixing it up, is a good idea. To put a path in there was not, it was a safety issue. I lived at 14 and a half in Ryan for over 30 years. I have seen that drain fell over the brim. And in the last five years, we had what, two 500-year floods? So, Sterling Heights has a clay base in good portions of it. Those drains are there for a purpose. That water that cannot drain through has to go someplace, so it needs a drain to carry it out. When the drain fills, and it will fill, if you have someone riding a bike down the edge, are they gonna stop? No, they're probably gonna do it anyway. The path is there, they like to ride their bikes. The other question was, how do they cross the roads? You would have people riding down the path and have to go to the corner to make the crossover? No, they're gonna cross right through the center of the road. So, to me, that was a safety issue. So, I'm very thankful that the county decided not to put the path in, to just clean it up, fix it up the best that they possibly can. I'm in favor of pass, but I have to throw this in there. If you want a bike path, you want to ride, let's connect Utica Road to the Hanson Trail over where the old Kleinel Bridge used to be. That way you can make a total circle through Dodge Park, down Utica Road, and round and round and have a good time.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I remember this very clearly. The county controls the drain, but I disagreed with my colleagues and I agree with the mayor. This was a good project. You know, we paid in Sterling Heights over a million dollars to create a trail from Delia Park to Beaumont and this would have been free. Some of the people up here have made up numbers that don't make any sense. It was a grant from the EPA funded through the Macomb County DP, Department of Public Works, and they would have put in for free. It would have been a tremendous amenity, even the start of the path from, from Van Dyke to Dodge Park. I live at 15 Mile in Van Dyke. I run on 15 Mile and N16 Mile and I'm constantly dodging cars, people on cell phones, curb cuts. You know, when you have an ability to run through a drain, or even not drain, run through a pathway that's now in the linear park, not have to worry about being hit by a car, that's tremendous. You know, we prioritize cars over people here in Sterling Heights. We don't have sidewalk in so many parts of our community. And then to turn down a free project that would create a pathway that would protect children, protect parents, you know, a lot of what my councilmates said and even the challenger candidates have said here are just boogeymen. It's the idea that, that it's gonna flood. Dodge Park floods almost every time it rains. It blocks off parts of, of the park. People don't run into the flooded water, they see it's flooded, they don't go down that way. I mean, the lack of common sense in some of the comments just, just murders me. You know, this wasn't in people's backyards, it was in county-owned property. People have expanded their backyards, both on this trail and the other one, to encompass property that is not owned by them. And to me, it just doesn't make sense. This is publicly owned property, it would have been tremendous asset, it would have added value to every home on that path. We should have approved it, we should have said, do it to the county. I'm sorry it didn't get built.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Diane. With Sterling Heights' transformation from a semi-rural bedroom community of the late 60s and early 70s to today's urban center featuring high residential densities and heavy manufacturing, the nature of the place has changed dramatically in the lifetime of some of the city's longtime residents. If you are elected or re-elected in November, you will help set the direction for the city's next transformation. What should that transformation be and how will you help to foster it?
Moved to Sterling Heights 50 years ago because we were moving out to the Moved to Sterling Heights fifty years ago because we were moving out to the country. So yes, I have seen the growth. I have seen the two-lane Ryan Road become a five-lane Ryan Road. What, what is going to happen in the future, I'm not sure. They said that, don't build $300,000 houses in the northwest quadrant because they'll never sell. Gee, those voters sold out in no time at all because we wanted homes, just like they have in Rochester, so that we could keep our residents here. I think Sterling Heights is heading in a good direction. We have every type of housing that you could possibly want. We have the starter homes, we have the middle-class homes, we have the expensive homes. You can buy your 400, $500,000, $1,000 home here in Sterling Heights if that's what you want. You have your condominiums, you have your apartments. I think we have a good variety, but we have to also remember that our population is aging. It seems like nobody wants to move out of Sterling Heights. It's such a great place to live and all the activities that we have and, and a safe place. So we have to start thinking about the senior population to make sure that we have adequate housing for them because some of them are not going to want to stay in their homes. They're going to be too big and they're going to want something a little bit smaller and something that is assisted-type living. So where are we going? I think we have to pay attention to the age of our population and make some considerations for them.
Thank you. Michael?
You know, I've lived, I moved to Sterling Heights in 1997, so I've been here over twenty years. And I don't know if the city has really changed. The character of the place has always been the same, a welcoming community where everyone can make a place for themselves, to be safe and secure in their homes, to have a great fire and police department, to have a beautiful community when you walk around. So I don't think it's changed, but there are some things that we're doing to transform the community. I guess number one on my list is Lakeside. You know, Lakeside Mall is not going to be a going concern in the future. It used to be Sterling Heights' number-one employer, and hopefully it'll be the number-one employer again once it's transformed. Now, that's up to the property owner, but I think that that's the perfect place for a new downtown with infill housing for those senior citizens who want to have more of a city-like experience with an urban housing grid. I think that we're going to have retail there. I think it's really going to create the downtown Sterling Heights never had as a bedroom community. But I also think we have to do more to help young families move into Sterling Heights. I think a lot of them are being priced out. Almost every house or development we create, we approve here in Sterling Heights, the brand-new ones are going for 380,000, 400,000, and to buy a house, you're paying 180,000 plus renovation because a lot of these are 1960s homes that had to be brought up to what would be considered a modern standard. So I think that it's hard for young families, which are going to be our future tax base, to, to move in here without us trying to figure out a better way to help them get homes. I mean, with the Headley Amendment, which I'm sure a lot of voters are familiar with, you know, our, our, our costs are fixed. You know, I saw a report from our auditors that said that we'll collect the same in gross taxes in 2007 that we collect, we're collecting 2022. We've had almost over a decade of deficit from the state because of our, our costs. We don't attract young families to raise our tax base. The people who are here, the seniors, are going to have to end up paying more and more for less and less. That's all I have.
Thank you. Maria?
I can remember as a small child, I had an aunt and uncle that lived over on Independence off of Seventeen in Van Dyke, and I grew up in Royal Oak, so we had to go through the cornfields to get to their house and, and it was like the big adventure going to Sterling Heights. So fast forward to today, and I am so proud of what our community has become. As far as the future, the redevelopment of Lakeside, of course, is first and foremost on a lot of our minds. We have put tools in place and a vision that hopefully will make some good, good, exciting things happen there for mixed uses for the future owner of that property. We have to have something for everyone. As far as our senior population, depending on what your definition of senior is, you know, the, the new Maple Lane development that's going to be coming in is geared more towards the 50 and up crowd, mixed use of apartments, condominiums, single-family homes, along with a beautiful golf course that will be open to the public. So I think we have a lot of senior community living facilities right now. There are more, I believe, on the books to, to be built and some welcoming, real communities, not just assisted care facilities for our aging population. As far as new homes, we're pretty much built out in Sterling Heights. There's not a whole lot more property available to build homes, so I think that's probably one of our biggest challenges for the future.
Thank you. Liz?
When we moved here in Sterling, to Sterling Heights in ninety-three, well, ninety-two, it was pretty much the same as it is with the exception of a couple of horse farms that were built up over on Dodge Park. It hasn't changed that footprint tremendously, but what I do see and what I, I do agree with some of our, the council people and others that have been speaking, is that we have two different populations that we really need to make sure that we welcome and accommodate and provide, provide housing for. One is the senior population. As they age, we, because I am 55, so as I age, I would like to be able to stay in my community without having to maintain the, the large home that I have. And it's important that we have good communities. It's not, a senior community doesn't have to be assisted living, it can just be a 50 and over, so that there's a smaller community, better opportunity to take care of property and still be a homeowner. And this, and the young families, I have adult children, young adult children, and they could not, at this time, afford to buy a home in Sterling Heights with what they were making. My son is a lawyer, my daughter-in-law-to-be is an engineer, and they didn't want to spend the 250, $300,000 to buy a home at this time they want to live in Sterling Heights. They're waiting for me to move out and they're buying my house. So that's, that is unfortunate because they, that is what we need to continue to promote our community and to grow our community in tax base and, and opportunity for our residents. If we don't continue to attract younger families, it will be on the backs of seniors, it will be on the, and, and it makes it very difficult to continue to improve a community on a fixed-income population. So that is extremely important that we provide housing and we have few opportunities, but we can look at those. I really love the idea of a nature center at the corner of Utica and Hayes, so I think those are some opportunities for us for growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen?
Thank you. Well, this is a walk down memory lane. I grew up in Madison Heights and I remember as a four, a five or six-year-old, my dad would drive me out to the country to buy eggs from this lady who had a chicken Koopner backyard, and that was at Fifteen Mile in Orion. So the city certainly has changed and changed for the better. You know, so what can I do as a city council member to, to help direct the, the transformation of Sterling Heights? One is keep our eye on growth. We just can't chase the, the dollar. You know, the idea, man, we're selling 500, $600,000 homes, God bless people, you know, for, for buying those. But we, you know, we, we need an affordable housing stock, and we have that affordable housing stock, but it's an aging housing stock, and we need to have, make sure that people can invest in their homes so they have, they live comfortably, but they're, but we have homes that at, at some point when they move on, it's an affordable house for that next young family, that first-time home buyer to come on in and buy an affordable house in a really great city. Also connecting our neighborhoods, we're still very segregated in our neighborhoods. It's very hard to get from one neighborhood to another, at least it's very hard to do it safely. And, you know, I was thinking about the other day, about going for a ride on the, the Smart Bus just to see how the system really works, because, you know, like everybody else, I drive. And just the idea of getting dropped off on one side of Van Dyke and then having to pick up the, the bus on the other side of Van Dyke, it's like, how do I get across Van Dyke? You know, it's, it's just really difficult. So we need to make sure that we become a more connected city, safer city to wa, non-mot, for non-motorized transportation, and overall, I, I just think we need to make sure that future city councils keep their eye on a, a growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please repeat the question?
Certainly. With Sterling Heights' transformation from a semi-rural bedroom community in the sixties and early seventies to today's urban centers featuring high residential densities and heavy manufacturing, the nature of the place has changed dramatically in the lifetime of some of the city's longtime residents. If you're elected in November, you will help to set the direction for the city's next transformation. What should that transformation be and how will you help foster it?
Okay. I too have been here for forty-two years. I live at Fifteen and Shaner, and when we first moved in, Shaner was a three-lane highway, and there were stables on Moravian where people would take their horses and they would go for rides down Fifteen Mile and then down Shaner. There was also a farm on the corner of Dodge Park and Metro Parkway. So I've seen a lot of growth and development in the city. Lucky, luckily, I'm sure that when we bought our home back in 1977, that everybody thought, oh my gosh, this is so expensive. But we did it, and you know, it, it was sacrifice. It wasn't something, you know, that we, we worked for it, we worked two jobs at times in order to get this. But when I look back now and, and when people say, I, you know, you can't afford to live in Sterling Heights, I look at it as you can't afford not to. Because you are not going to get the services that you do anywhere else in any other community. And I think as long as we work together, we can maintain those services so that everybody benefits. If we, I would think that if I, we were working in another, in, in the direction in the future would be sustainability in some of the new places and the new placemaking that we're going to do. I think a perfect example, one is Mojeris Complex that's going to be at Maple Lane has, because it's for retirees, they're not looking for a place to work, but they will be able to live there and entertain themselves as well as there's going to be a restaurant there, a lifestyle center. So it pretty much is a, you're buying into a lifestyle there. And I think that there is that opportunity in the redevelopment of Lakeside where people can live there, work there, entertain themselves, and not use a vehicle to get from one place to, to another. So I think that's probably what be, the goal would be sustainability. Also is that neighbors helping neighbors stay in their home, I think is, is one way that we're going to have to, something we're going to have to do in the future even more than what we're doing already.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, I don't have a cr, I don't have a crystal ball, so it's kind of hard to look that far in the future. My family moved here in seventy-four. Where we moved over there at sixteen in Quinder, it used to be a lot of old trails and farmland. Now it's concrete and I see the community is aging and a lot of Chaldeans, Koreans, African-Americans are moving in, making this a very diverse community. What I would like to see happen is, first of all, we need to start at the top by diversifying viewpoints of our city leadership. That's why I'm a proponent of term limits to get some new voices with new ideas and to help lead this city into the future. I think, I could give you a whole shopping list or a wish list of things that would be great, great as a performing artist, man. There's all kinds of things I could suggest, but I think we need to start with basics. People will flock to this city if we have a first-rate police and fire department, and I'd like to see the library become a jewel of Michigan, and of course, I'd like to see our streets be second to none.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Well, I would like to think that the, the transformation of the city and the next era of this city is ushered in on the backs of people my age. If I'm elected to city council, I will begin to usher in this next era of the city, laying out the blueprint for bringing in young families and young people while not leaving behind our longtime residents. I will strive to provide affordable new housing projects in our city to help out both the young and working-class people of our city, to both those whose backs this city has been built upon and to those who are asking and looking to move here. To bring in these young and these working-class people, we need to connect our city through these aforementioned pathways. We need to provide the highest level of amenities possible to our residents and stop pricing out our young and working-class people with these 300 to 500,000-dollar housing projects. I am the type of person that we are looking to attract to this city for the future, and I could not afford to live here without what my friends call my roommates. So, that being said, the future of this city, both for our senior population and for our young population, is on the back of affordable housing that makes this city a community that anyone can live and flourish in.
Thank you. Jasmine?
Thank you. I find interesting the whole affordable housing idea. When we moved here sixteen years ago, we chose Sterling Heights because it was an affordable community. We are not a rich family. I actually come from a, from a poor family. So I know what is to not to have and being blessed to be here and have and being able to afford the house that we have. I believe in Sterling Heights and I walked from north to south, east to west, I believe that we do have affordable housing already. I do have friends that I had met while campaigning in those, in the different neighborhoods. What I think that we need to do to continue the transformation in our city is keep up our neighborhoods. We, we need to encourage the residents. Our city is a diverse city where people come from places that they never model on. I didn't. Those things are a small things, but that will bring value to our neighborhoods. We need to work for the, yes, we need young communities, and that was the whole purpose of the recreating recreation proposal. When passed, now we have more to bring the, the ideas to the young people. The house in the transformation, I come from a city, one city had of around 10 million people. We have a small population here, which I love, and that is why we stayed in this city, because you can control hundred, 130,000 people and provide for them the services. We have great police, fire and department services. We had affordable houses. The transformation needs to come from the community working together and making this a place where we want to stay here and make the city a great city to be in. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have time for one quick question before, last question before we go into closing statements, and this will be for Nicholas. Michigan legalized the recreational use of marijuana in December 2018. However, in a four-three split vote of councils, Sterling Heights opted to not allow the sale of substances for recreational use within the city until new state laws are drafted. Hopefully, this will make a path through allowing commercial sales clear. Proponents are allowing sales, proponents of allowing sales argue that Sterling Heights could have distinguished itself as a trendsetter by foregoing ahead with its own set of ordinances and other laws. Do you think Sterling Heights should continue to wait for Lansing to write the legislation, or should we determine for ourselves how recreational marijuana is sold in our community?
Well, this is certainly the luck of the draw because this is one that I've had on my mind for a long time, and it's one of my hot-button issues for this city. Not allowing the recreational sale, growth, and distribution of marijuana in our city is an absolute shame. It is a mistake and it is something that needs to be discussed. We should be cornering the market on the distribution and sale and growth of marijuana in our city. This is a future part of the economy for the entire nation, whether we can see that now or not. This is something that's been popularized throughout many major cities in the United States and throughout many major states in the United States. Us not allowing sale and not allowing distribution and not allowing growth within our city outside of the allowed residential growth is going to put us behind the eight ball when this all does become legalized and when we wind up changing our mind because we are losing out on the taxable revenues from this economic system. I think it is extremely, extremely important that before other communities manage to jump us in line, we change our decision and we allow the legalized sale of recreational marijuana us in line, we change our decision and we allow the legalized sale of recreational marijuana in our city. Without that, we will wind up behind local communities who allow it and where people want to go. Businesses want to come to Sterling Heights. Businesses of all types want to come to Sterling Heights, and it's important that we welcome in these businesses and not turn them aside based on whatever the reasoning may be, from your personal ideas to the idea that the guidelines are not set. We have the ability to set our own guidelines here in Sterling Heights prior to the state of Michigan setting their guidelines, and I think it is ideal that we wind up cornering the market on marijuana rather than falling behind the eight ball and winding up with just everybody's leftovers.
Thank you. Jasmine?
I think the decision that the council members made here to stop or to uphold the law in Sterling Heights was a mature and wise decision. I came here when they made the decision. I do had a teenager. One of my concerns was with, with the sales of the marijuana products, how will be the, the city be able to control it? We are waiting for Lansing to give the steps to, not, not to decide for ourselves, but they can set up the guidelines for us to follow. This is one of the hot topics that people tend to be emotional, but we need to see it in a way, it's going to affect the city, how will affect the city? There are states that already went through this and all these tax revenue that supposedly they will be earning was not there. So we need to learn from what the others had done and not make the same mistakes. I think again, was a mature and wise decision to say, okay, we need to study it more and let's see what happens, and then we can move forward if that is what the legislators think that will be the rising for Sterling Heights. So instead rushing, let's take the time, that will be wise. Thank you.
I was part of the vote that said, no, let's wait. Let's see what Lansing is going to do. Let's see what the rules and regulations are going to be. Because we received letters from the two school districts, Utica and Warren Crone, saying, please, no marijuana facilities in the city of Sterling Heights. I've had business owners say to me, I don't want a dispensary next door to my building. I came to Sterling Heights because I wanted to be a safe community to grow my business. And when I say grow my business, they're not talking about the little leaf. So my thought is, it's too soon. Lose out on money? I'm not sure that marijuana is going to be a profitable business for Sterling Heights. I think, why? What's, what is the sale, the grow, the processing of marijuana going to do for Sterling Heights? Who is going to want it in their backyard? And until those questions are answered, I say, sit back and wait. The last survey that we did, the people said, no marijuana facilities in Sterling Heights. So I have to go by what I know at this point, and I'm still going to stand strong. No, we're not ready yet because we don't have the facts, we don't know how it's going to go, and no one has proven to me that it's going to increase any revenue in the city of Sterling Heights. And I don't see any business people out there saying, hey, put one next door to me, please.
Thank you. Michael?
You know, this is a tough issue. You know, the voters in Sterling Heights approved the marijuana law. That's what I'm looking at. But at the same time, they didn't approve every different license. When it came before our board, you know, there's not just dispensaries, which is, which is the hot-button issue, there's secure transporters, there's testing facilities, there's growing facilities, but I don't think those will locate in Sterling Heights because our property is almost too expensive. They're going to go up north. I, I saw, you know, we have a brand-new industrial park where Sunnybrook used to be. Why shouldn't we have a testing facility there? Why shouldn't we have a, maybe a secure transporter located there? What I'm most concerned about is the grows in the residential areas, and nothing we do as a board can stop that. The only way we can prevent that is to give people a, a safe, legal way to buy marijuana. Almost every community around us has legalized and allows dispensaries, Warren, Madison Heights, East Point, Utica. So it's all around us now. Why shouldn't Sterling Heights profit off it as a business? Now, we can fight about dispensaries, and my thinking was that if we set the standard very high, we're going to have excellent businesses that are more medical-based, we're not going to have the House of Dank, you know, the Weed Hut. I don't want those things. I think those, those devalue our community. At the same time, you know, it's going to be the Wild West sometimes if we don't, if we don't set firm regulations. I happen to look at what other cities had done. They set firm regulations, and the state almost adopted them. I thought Sterling Heights could lead the way in that. We want, you know, a facility that's, that's, that's high-class, that is limited, that's away from residential areas, that has safe and secure. So it's just a hard issue, and I think that the voters need to give us a little bit more guidance on it. But I, I believe that we shouldn't, you know, stop legal businesses from locating in Sterling Heights.
Thank you. Maria?
Thank you. This truly is a hot-button topic, and the voters did approve the sale of recreational marijuana. They also gave, in the, by approving that proposal, gave us the opportunity as a community to opt out of having it in our community. I think I was one of the council women, or council persons that, that voted against pursuing this in our community at this time. I'm really uncomfortable when you have people from LARA or the State Licensing Department speak to us at an MML workshop, say, you know what, we have three people in our department, and we really don't know what we don't know about this yet. They have the ability to change the laws on an annual basis. That makes me really uncomfortable. As far as lost revenue to the city, I'm not so sure that there's a big money grab out there. In fact, I think that the enforcement will cost our community enforcement of security for different types of facilities, be it distributorship or, or any other facility that is part of this production. I too have had business owners approach me and say, you know, they want no part of it around their businesses. I think by jumping in without really knowing all of the facts behind it would be irresponsible of us, and I think that we, the voters gave us the option of holding back and taking our time, and I'm comfortable with that decision.
Thank you. Liz?
Yes, I also was one of the ones that thought that we needed to wait for state regulations, for state guidelines, for state input. This is a very new and very untested industry that is cropping up in this, in the country, but certainly for Michigan, brand-new. So I think actually it was not just wise and prudent, I think it was bold to hold off because it's, the easy thing is to just throw up our hands and say, yep, voters said they wanted it, they want it, let's let them in. It, it would change our community, and we don't want it to change for the negative. So the, the best way that I felt that we needed to continue to protect our residents was to prevent just jumping in without regulations. I just pulled up quick Google, thank you, Google, the stats, and California was down forty-five percent of their expected revenue. So it is not necessarily a moneymaker in, in certain communities. We need to first have the regulations in order to know what we have to work with. We have medical marijuana that is approved. We haven't even gotten onto that issue quite thoroughly yet. So I think the steps toward recreational marijuana are going to need to be slow and purposeful, and I'm very happy with my decision to wait and see how we go. Thank you.
So I, I think the state has completely failed us, failed all cities in the state of Michigan frankly on, on this issue. I was in the legislature in twenty-eighteen when we had the opportunity to take it up and amend the law, and they refused to do it simply because it was an election year and they didn't want to take a marijuana vote in an election year. And that was a great disservice to all of us. So frankly, I, I, and I'm very neutral on this. I, I hear the, I hear the arguments on how much money we're going to make. We never hear the, the talk on how much it's going to cost us, and there are stats from California and from Colorado and other states on, on the cost of public safety and so forth. And, you know, we also have to keep in mind that, one, marijuana is here, it's been here for a long time. And, two, we have neighboring communities that are, that are going to be opening up shops. So, you know, if people in Sterling Heights want to access recreational marijuana, they're going to be able to do that. But ultimately, the state has to do their job. They have to create rules and regulations, pass them down to us so we can build on those, and then we can take a look at this in, in the future. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I come from the generation that we were the pioneers when it came to marijuana. So it has been a topic of conversation for decades. But what I need to say is, first of all, I accept the fact that people can use it because it is legal now. So I'm not stopping anybody from using it. I also understand the importance of medical marijuana in our healthcare system, that it is an alternative. So I, I recognize that, too. I think the biggest obstacle here is our, the state is holding us back. The state is holding us back from making any permanent decision on what we're going to do as far as having facilities within the, the city. And that's because they don't have their guidelines in place. They don't have a department in place that's going to handle this. And I think part of it is Mr. Yanis is right. If, if the legislature would have put regulations and passed something, instead of putting it on the ballot by the marijuana industry, I think things would be a lot easier for communities throughout the state. So yes, the state did let us down once again, and that's part of it. It's, you know, I've seen the state let us down on other instances. So it's hard for me to put a blind trust in them right now in order to move forward on this particular issue. When we say that the neighboring communities are going, they've already opted in, that's fine, because if you were to put a person in the middle of Sterling Heights, that means they only have to go three miles in any direction, and they should be able to buy what they need, whether it be for recreation or medical purposes. You can also, at this time, have medical marijuana mailed to your home. So this is, we're not depriving our citizens of what they need. You know, I did some research on my own, and I know someone that actually got off opioids and, by using cannabis. And so he was one of the first people that I asked about this, and I said, do you have a problem getting what you need? And he says, uh, no, because I actually went into business doing it, I have no problem finding it, and we have clients that know that we're there. So that's how I did this. You know, the other thing is I have to look at the letters that we got from, actually, I think it was the county board of superintendents that asked us not to do this at this time. And the phone calls from the businesses in our city that said, don't put it next to my business. So those are the things I took into account when making this decision, and now I'll just wait for the state regulations to come forward before I make a decision.
Thank you.
Can, can I, excuse me, can I have Mrs. Ziarco repeat that part where Councilwoman Yanis was right? For the, for the tape. Thank you.
I support medical marijuana. It's, it's proven, it's been a godsend to many people, including my autistic nephew. But I believe recreational use of marijuana is a step too far. What often is not mentioned is recreational marijuana is far more potent by many times than it was twenty, thirty, forty years ago. And as a matter of fact, these days, a lot of marijuana dealers lace their marijuana with dangerous drugs like fentanyl or formaldehyde, which are killer drugs. And also not mentioned is, we think about the revenue it may bring in, but what about the costs and overdosing? Marijuana is, there's, you can look on the internet, there's all kinds of studies that show marijuana as a gateway drug, and it also has led to psychosis in many people. So I just don't believe that we should be in the business for recreational marijuana in this city, and so I favor the opt-out.
Thank you. And thank you candidates for your insight and with all these questions. It's now time for your final statements, and we're going to start off with Maria. Oh, I'm sorry, Liz.
Thank you. Again, I am Councilwoman Liz Sarowski. I have been on the council going, this is going to be my fifth, fourth year, starting after this next election, hopefully. And I wanted to say a couple of different things. One, I am very, very proud of my service to my community, but I'm very grateful, grateful for the trust that the residents have placed in myself. I am currently the mayor pro temp, which was a beautiful award basically from the residents giving me the highest vote count, and I'm very, very humbled by that. The things that are most important to me as, as a councilwoman are to maintain our safety. Police and fire and DPW provide those to us on a wonderful, fantastic basis. We are one of the best, highest-rated communities in the nation, sixth safest in the country, highest, most safest in this state, largely in part to our fire and safety. DPW keeps our roads, keeps our infrastructure going, makes sure the water's turned on for us. We could not function without these departments. So those are my biggest focus, that I need to make sure that we promote, protect, and make, give them the tools that they need by the fundings that we can provide to them. I am extremely proud also that we are able to provide a great business environment for our community. People want to come to here, businesses are constantly coming to us with new ideas, new expansions, wanting to stay. We have national, international businesses placed right here in Sterling Heights. That is very unique for many communities. We need to continue to keep that business environment open and available to them. But the thing that we've mentioned so many times is that our city is also fun. It is a place to live, grow, love, play, and that's what we need to understand, that we've made this, helped to make this such a good community, and I'm proud to continue, and I hope you give me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty?
So let me thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. I think it's an incredibly important event to, you know, make sure that the citizens get an opportunity to hear from the people that are asking for their vote. Again, I was appointed to city council in January twenty-nineteen, and again, prior to that, I served the citizens of Sterling Heights in Lansing as their state representative. And again, prior to that, as really boots-on-the-ground protecting our city as a firefighter, paramedic since nineteen ninety-five. I really believe in the basics, always take care of the basics first. And that's my approach when it comes to being an elected official as well. Making sure that we are using our tax dollars wisely, we are using those tax dollars to make sure that we have safety, security, we're taking care of our roads, our sidewalks, our parks, the things that people want to pay for. And those are the things that I, I'm dedicated to doing. Also being active in the community, making sure that we have outreach, that people can get ahold of me and talk to me about the issues that are concerning them. I get a lot of emails, I think we probably all do. But I want to, I want people to know that I am completely accessible to them so I can hear what their concerns are. If I'm re-elected, I plan on doing a couple different community outreach programs to make sure that I'm in all neighborhoods. I think most of us here are all from east of Van Dyke, I think, just east of Van Dyke, you know, and, and nobody from the western side of the, the community, so I want to make sure that I outreach to those folks as well. So I have a website, votehenryyanis.com. I'm also on Facebook. Please get ahold of me if you have any questions about my candidacy, and I'd love to talk to you. Thank you.
Well, throughout my years on city council, I believe that there's one commonality in, in a year, and that was patience, teamwork, and communication. If we look at our accomplishments as a community, it really goes without saying that we're constantly competing against ourselves to be better. We've earned the right to brag about population growth and exceptional bond rating, low tax and water rates, safety and the quality of life amenities. I've never known us to sit back on our laurels, where we are relentlessly looking at ways the city can make it a better place to live, work, and play. We want business owners to come to Sterling Heights and bring their friends along with them. We don't, we don't just stop there. We actually provide educational resources and encourage businesses to take advantage of the classes that we offer at the Velocity Center. We work in partnership with service organizations, religious institutions, businesses, small and large, to create an environment where everyone feels like they are a piece of a big- where everyone feels like they are a piece of a bigger picture, our city, which we all call home. So, in the next few months, our new goal will be everyone living in the city, we want to be counted in the 2020 census because each and every one of us is important to our success. I have continually said that the city of Sterling Heights is our collective investment. Protecting our collective investment is always and, will be a priority for me. I'm proud of our accomplishments, I'm proud of our employees, and I'm proud of the residents who understand that they are part of the solutions, if any, problem that we have. But after work, after serving on, in the community for eighteen years, I'm not going to try to reinvent myself. I know that residents have paid attention to my actions while working on their behalf. I'm asking you to vote for me because I believe that my continued service, support, and dedication to our city and its residents have proven me to that I am a leader and who can work with others to make tough decisions in the best interest of our residents, in the best interest of our collective investment. So, thank you, and please vote by absentee ballot or on November the fifth.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not a politician or a bureaucracy wonk by any means. I'm just a regular Joe, although a lot of people would argue at that point. Three years ago, the city council sought fit to award me this nice neighbor award for my efforts on behalf of the city. Whether as spaghetti man or as Brian Alsobrooks, I believe in Sterling Heights, and I think we have a brilliant future. That's why I believe very strongly in the issue of term limits. I'd like to see that instituted through a charter amendment as a way of diversifying our leadership. We do have a very diverse community, and that's one way of ensuring new voices with new ideas. Also, fiscal discipline is very important to me. I practice kitchen-table financing. I'm not opposed at all to spending money in the city on worthwhile projects. I just believe we need to be wise and wise with our spending and spend it well before we, before we ask people to dig into their own pockets for more stuff on our personal wish lists. I think we need to do things like look at local corporations, local businesses, try more public-private partnerships, or ask businesses to pony up more money if we, if we want things done. My priorities, as I said, what'll really ensure a bright future for this city is a first-rate police and first responders force. Also, I'd like to, so, that's why my priorities would be the police, first of all, and as far as our library, a lot more can be done for our library. I'd like to see it become the jewel of Michigan and also continue work on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Thank you. I always love this event every two years. It continues to remind me how much respect that I have for everybody who's up here and everything you guys do, and also for the passion that we all have for our city, regardless of if we agree with one another on how to get there. We all have that driving force. So, I want to thank, again, everybody who came out today to immerse yourself in the city politics that we have here. I hope that my answers today have kind of spoken for themselves, but on the off-chance that they haven't, you can feel free to find out more by visiting www.kavali4council.org, www.facebook.com/kavali4council. You can find me on Instagram at @kavali4council, on Twitter at @kavali4council, or you can contact me through a direct message on any of the above sites, by email at nicholas.a.kavali@gmail.com, or by text or phone at 586-212-8061, and I am happy to answer questions any time of the day. But aside from the shameless self-promotion that I'm doing up here, which is my job, I would like to take my last bit of time here to talk about the most important thing happening on November 5th. While on November 5th, yes, I want you to vote for me and cast your vote for anybody who you believe in, but on November 5th, the most important vote that you can cast is to vote yes on the upcoming Safe Streets Village renewal. This is the most important thing happening in our city right now, and this is an absolute must for us. So, yes, while I would love for you to vote for me and show that you want a strong, young, progressive voice on the city council, the most important thing is that you get out and vote, get out and voice your voice, voice your voice, get out and voice for yourself, and vote yes on the Safe Streets renewal.
Thank you.
After many years of being involved with our city and fighting for our residents, it has become really clear to me that the city government needs to be far more transparent in their policies and how they are spending our tax dollars. As a leader, we stop at the unnecessary park by trail. The city spent half-million dollars with the golden ring, which I don't approve. During neighborhood roads repairs, some residents paid the contractor an average of eighteen-hundred dollars to have their driveway approaches fixed when it was part of the city's obligation. By the, they didn't know that they shouldn't be paying. Now, the city will reimburse them. I would like to see large, large expenditures be listed separately from the consent agenda so residents can have an input in such city expenses as where, as it was in the past. For transparency, we need to reinstate this rule. My goals are to exercise fiscal responsibility, government accountability to you, and to better prioritize expenditures. I will listen to all your concerns and make informed decisions in how we spend our tax dollars more responsibly. I strive to keep our residents informed, taxes low, encourage business development, and stop government overreach into our personal life and properties. I work together with our neighbors to make our city beautiful, a safe, and a great place to work, play, and live. I will appreciate your support by voting for me in November at the absentee ballots or at the polls. Contact me at jasminemearley.com or Facebook, Friends of Jasmine Early. Thank you to the chamber again for allowing us to be here. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you. The city is moving forward and has accomplished many goals in the last two years with the current council leadership, which I am proud to be a part of. Some of the goals are: the approval of the Recreating Recreation Initiative. We have reinvested in the community for not only our youth, but all the residents to enjoy the improvements to our parks. The city's economic development plan for major commercial and manufacturing investments has continued business development, growth, and jobs. Our excellent police and fire departments continue to improve their services to the residents. The successful EMS transport services, police department's smart moves for our children, the K-9 unit are a few examples of why the Safe Streets Village is necessary, along with maintaining full staffing. I support public safety and equipment to keep our residents and first responders safe. Expansion of CERT and COP programs to assist in improving safe neighborhoods. Youth development programs such as the Fire Explorers to give Sterling Heights youth the opportunity to experience first responder paramedic roles. That way, we have the opportunity to train our future firefighters. The new Youth Advisory Council to develop youth programs, expand the CPR training classes to residents and businesses. We need to continue city road improvements and complete sidewalks and roads to our parks. Years in council, along with my work experience and residing in the city for fifty years, I have the background in understanding the current and new challenges facing the city. I would like to serve the residents another two years and keep Sterling Heights moving forward as a vibrant city creating future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you so much. I just have to say, I love Sterling Heights. I love living here. I love being a part of this community. And I should know, I've visited twenty-seven countries. I've lived abroad in two while working for the US government. I moved back to Sterling Heights because my family was here, and I know it's the best place to live in the state of Michigan. Now, my platform has always been to keep Sterling Heights safe. We need to improve our police and fire, and we have, and we're going to continue to do that. We need better code enforcement. We've hired more code enforcement officers. We need to create a city for everyone, both new residents and long-term people, so they all have a place here and something to do. You know, I got elected two years ago, and I'm running for reelection this year, on a platform of listening to residents and helping them navigate the city. With all the cutbacks we've had over the last ten, fifteen years, you know, it's often harder for residents to interface with the city council. I know when Mayor Nadi was here, he always said, if you call City Hall, you'll get a person. They'll always help you with your problem. That's not so much the case anymore. So, I know one of my biggest responsibilities is, responsibilities is to answer constituent concerns. From having a tree trimmed in front of your house, to fixing the sidewalk, to helping you navigate, maybe the building department, I'm here for you. So, I hope you'll consider to support me again on November 5th and reelect me to the city council. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, that completes our candidate forum. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I have my notes. Just checking to see if you're paying attention.
I wouldn't have minded going first, by the way. Let me start with, we live in a community that never ceases to amaze me. The residents have repeatedly spoken and stepped up by voicing their priorities and what they want for their city. What I see is a momentum further advancing Sterling Heights to be the best place to live, work, and raise a family. Because of the voter-approved Safe Streets Village, we've been able to invest about thirty-three million dollars in our neighborhood road improvements over the past six years, leaving more money available to improve main roads, which is desperately needed. We also have been able to maintain our staffing levels in the police and fire departments, along with implementing ALS transport. Those staffing levels and services contribute to the fact that Sterling Heights, once again, has been named the safest large city in the state of Michigan and the sixth safest in the nation. Safe streets must be renewed. Another voter-approved priority is the Recreating Recreation Initiative. The transformation of Dodge Park, along with all of our parks, and the addition of many new and exciting amenities, has brought a new spark throughout the city that, that has something for everyone, young, old, and everyone in between. We encourage to, we encourage our business development and expansion in our community, which not only creates jobs, but also has a major role in Sterling Heights having one of the lowest tax rates in the southeast of Michigan. Because we have a reputation for being fiscally responsible with low taxes and superior services, Sterling Heights continues to experience significant growth, not only in manufacturing, but residential properties as well. Property values for both residential and commercial rank in the top five statewide. We've contributed to the general fund balance, or the rainy day fund, for the past five budgets, and we continue to address unfunded liabilities in our budget. In closing, I would like to thank the residents for giving me the opportunity to serve every one of you. As always, my promise continues to be, I will work hard, be fiscally responsible, and educate myself to make the best-informed decisions on your behalf. Those decisions made with honesty, respect, and integrity. I will listen with an open mind and vote for what I believe in is in the best interest of all the residents of Sterling Heights. Again, I thank you for your consideration when casting your ballot at home or at the polls on November the 5th. Thank you.
And now that concludes the forum. I'd like to thank Melanie Davis and Dan Rizik and the staff of the Sterling Heights TV for broadcasting this event live today. They'll also be rebroadcasting it between now and Election Day. I'd also like to thank Patty, unlike me, for your flawless effort today with your timing. Our chamber thanks you, the citizens thank you, and we wish you all the best of luck in the upcoming election. And just remember, everyone, exercise your right to vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you.